Recording.
Okay.
We're not recording.
Oh, meeting the order. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've all signed the warrant.
Yep.
Sure did.
Yep.
Okay.
The warrant please put here.
So, did anybody note any errors or omissions in the May third Town and Area Selectman Meeting minutes?
I did not see anybody.
I don't think I saw any on this one either.
Make a motion, we approve the May third's Selectmen's Meetings minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the May third Selectman Meeting minutes, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Now, do you have any particular copy or one of them?
I already gave that.
Oh, you gave that too?
Yep.
The one since May third.
Take one of these copies we got there.
Yeah, any of those copies.
Is that what it was, one of these?
Gary has too many piles.
Gary, you've got too many piles.
That's June third.
He's got May third in his hand.
The signing page isn't on there.
It's on the back, I think.
No, none of the May third one, at least mine isn't.
Oh, yeah, the one I printed had sigilo drawings.
The other one?
He's got one.
I think he's got it.
Okay, just gonna flip the page over and yours is on the next page.
You gotta put a first page of that.
So, the next one is gonna be the June first one, correct?
Yes.
Now, they probably haven't.
I haven't received the updated one, but we did talk about changing the time, correct?
We did, yeah. You can just take a cup, look at that.
Okay.
We went from here, we adjourned the Selectman Meeting from here to reconvene at the Grange Hall for the open house. Public hearing.
Public hearing. Do we have to put what time we ended the public hearing in this minute?
I think it's six, that could.
That's in another meeting minutes.
Okay, so that doesn't have.
Just another meeting minute for them.
Right, so that doesn't have to go in this one?
No.
No, okay. Okay, I'm all right with these.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of the meeting from June first, uh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve, uh, June first. Emergency meeting of the Nury Selectmen, all those in favor?
In favor. This is the right one if you wanna sign that, that adds to my collection.
So now, did you have that other one?
Yes.
Did you redo it?
I did.
For the public hearing?
I don't idea.
That's the one that.
Here, get me your piles. It doesn't have one.
It would be just the public hearing, what I'm gonna do, all was the names.
It doesn't have any lines on it, cuz I didn't know if you guys were gonna sign it or not sign it, cuz it was with the planning board also. Do you know what I mean? But you can.
You don't want us to approve this?
Sure, go ahead. I just wasn't sure who had to sign where was the joint.
It does say joint Selectman Planning Board, so.
Right.
It's probably gonna be signed by both boards. We can do that one, then we can do another one up and work together. Well, that one doesn't have lines on it either, so.
So, what was this table, this one into?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda, we might as well have Becky Denver. Look at license renewals and then we'll move on.
Do you have to vote me onto the agenda or anything? Okay. So, this is the renewal for the Sunday River Golf Course liquor license, as well as, as I do every year, the auxiliary license for the mobile cart that goes around the course. The check for Nury is ten dollars and it has to be signed in blue ink. And then tabbed which places that have to be signed.
I like that you brought your own blue pen.
We go through this every so often, is it?
When she leaves her playing board, I'm quitting.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the two liquor licenses for the Sunday River Golf Course and the auxiliary cart.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the liquor license for the Sunday River Golf Club and the auxiliary for the.
To work.
God, that goes around on the course.
Blue, is that her, is that the right pen?
Blue pen.
Where's that pen that I passed with you?
Okay.
Well, this is, ain't things all blue?
Not in a circle, some of them are, some of them aren't.
That's definitely a black pen.
That's blue.
Is it blue?
Whatever. State of Maine, County of Oxford.
I probably have twenty-five in my car. I stole this one from the group up.
Okay.
Need your blue pen.
I need that blue pen as well.
Needing your second chair.
All of them are teaching. I don't know, we'll get the cancel check. Thank you. Do we usually choose copies of these? No, they have it in the past. I'll have an extension request to extend the self-renew license for the Tough Mountain Challenge event. That's good, since I'm registered. In the past, that hasn't required the Selectmen's signature to sign the agreement to sign. So, I think you.
All yours.
There you go.
Thanks, Becky.
Get you out of here quicker than we can.
Yeah.
Good luck. I'll see you next week.
Yeah, well, I'm waiting for the original signature page to come back from Michigan, cuz Ben Dembeck has to sign, sign it instead.
My planning board meeting.
Oh, planning board meeting. Crap.
Yep.
Yes, we can't wait to serve. Yes, I'll see you there.
I forgot about that. It's been a while, cuz, yeah, we didn't do one on the first, so.
We did. We had the public hearing, we had the green.
Right, but we didn't really have a, an official planning board meeting. Yeah, so, I didn't tell them.
You can have that.
Right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Right, I will go with the regular business agenda. We are now gonna have the executive session. MRSA Chapter thirteen title four oh five six A personnel. Uh, we don't need to, so we can skip that. I guess I could back up and make the announcement of who we hired.
Who?
Well, actually, you know. What was last night, two, two and a half hours?
The boards like we have hired Loretta Powers to become Town Administrator for the second time. She will be getting done in Bethel on July eighth and starting Nury July eleventh.
It's my birthday present. There you go.
Yep. Very good choice. Thank you, board.
Okay, then we got the thing for accidental insurance. Now, I guess this is for volunteers, like for people.
Yes, for our boards.
For boards.
Yep. Cemetery Committee, North Nury Church Committee, anyone that doesn't actually get paid a stipend.
Well, I get paid a stipend for section.
Yeah, but that's not a committee.
Well, I'm on the committee, but it's.
You're on the committee, but you do give, that is a paid position, yes. So, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it before I signed anything.
Well, I guess it just covers our.
Yeah.
Own butts if we do it, so.
Yeah, yeah. The firefighters have their own insurance, the boards have their own, we have our professional insurance, two dollars per year per person.
Yeah, I think we can, I think you covered that. Okay, I will sign that.
So, I guess I'll make a motion to have accidental insurance for volunteers renewal for.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to move the accidental insurance for volunteers renewal, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All in favor? So, you got a copy of that?
I do, yeah.
All right, next thing is volunteer community, committee members have keys outstanding for several buildings in Nury with a problem at the turns with the sag in the exterior walls being of safety concerns, do you want me to draft a letter to get those keys back or change the locks?
Let's just change the lock. That's my suggestion.
Are we talking about here?
No, we're talking about, well, it could be, well, Grange Hall has several keys, but most of them, uh, people that are using them.
Correct.
Regularly.
Yeah.
And with the, I don't know if the church committee is going to reconvene and meet again, and I don't even know if they go inside.
Uh, David Bartlett has turned his keys in, I've given him a receipt for his, I've asked another committee member, I haven't heard back from her, and then I asked a third committee member, um, and he said he wanted to hang on to his key.
Oh, that started way back when he first wanted to use it for a baptism for his grandchild or something way back in last spring.
But if that foundation is a safety concern, and we're looking to put contractors in there to fix it, I think we shouldn't have the public in there.
I think we should change the lock, so we have a handle on who goes and who doesn't. If we don't have all the keys, we don't know who goes in there.
Right, so you said David had one.
David turned his in, and I've given him a receipt for them.
And has had, who else has one besides?
I don't know if Jim Cisco had one or not, he was here yesterday, but I forgot to ask him, I have asked Brooks, but he wanted to hang on to his key, and it wasn't my place to argue with the man.
Well, I think we had asked him before and he basically flat right said that he wasn't gonna give it back, so. I guess at this point, until the committee reconvenes, and then we'll just give one member.
Mm-hmm.
A key.
Right, not everyone needs a key.
No, it shouldn't, I mean.
Well, considering the situation of the building is in, where if it's deemed unsafe, I think one person should have a key.
But that person should be me, I'm the facility manager.
Right.
Or one of you guys.
Where the keys should be here.
The key should be here, that's where it's always hasn't been, or when the other group had it, I think Sylvia had the key, but she was on the board of directors, whatever it was for the church at that time. So, I guess. Are you gonna make that a motion, or you want?
I'll make it a motion that we change the locks on the, the only one we're having a problem with is the North Nury Church, the rest of them, the schoolhouse and all that's okay?
I think everybody else comes here to get the key or they go over and open it.
That's what I've understood for the last year, yes, for the, for the school.
Well, my motion is to change the lock on the North Nury Church.
I'll second it. Been moved and seconded that we change the lock on the North Nury Church, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Now, what about the Grange Hall, because that, I understand, is, is different because that is the emergency. Like, I have a key to the Grange Hall.
Well, I think you got your key because you had the.
Well, I had the craft here there every year and multiple times, like when the power's gone out, I've been asked to go and open the door so people can go in and use it.
I don't have a problem with that. If we asked for your key, you probably would give it back.
Well, yeah.
If we're not asking for your key.
I just wanna make sure, like.
That's why I asked the question.
I don't know how many other keys there are out there, but.
We have, um.
I think Brad had one at one time.
Yes, because he was also in the same boat where they would.
He would go over and get the trash if there was something else over there, so.
Yeah, we're working on making a chart on who has the keys to what.
The, um, for the Grange, I think the people that have the keys, Clyde, who claims it for us? We, this staff just takes one out of the drawer whenever we go down there, you have one, Brad has one. The yoga lady, or whatever, Tai Chi, whatever she teaches, um, she has a key, but she's in there twice a week, so she keeps her key until such time.
That's not a problem.
Right, yeah, I'm not aware of any committee members that have a key to that.
Does, uh, the school down the corner there, do they have, they must have a key, they've been using it.
Any school comes and gets their key when they are gonna use that building.
And if someone rents it, we tell them they can pick it up on Thursday and to drop it in the slot before Monday morning.
No, that's, that, we got a handle on it, that's what I'm looking to see, I guess.
Okay, thank you. I'll get to work on that.
We have received a request from eight o'clock for hundred dollars for local baked goods to be purchased for the dedication ceremony of the age-friendly initiative benches at Covered Bridge in the Grange Hall. I'll make a motion that we grant the request of a hundred dollars for baked goods for the dedication ceremonies of the age-friendly initiative benches for the Grange Hall and the Covered Bridge.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we grant the request for a hundred dollars for baked goods for the age-friendly initiative benches, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All in favor? Timeshare Jordan and someone have several accounts with outstanding balances or credit. See it there, so we can write off the amount.
What are we looking at for numbers?
Well, these, there should be, you probably have one of these somewhere.
Probably do on one of these.
Well, I'll review on real estate accounts, it came to our attention that there are several Jordan Summit timeshare accounts that either have small balances or credits, not enough to refund. These date back to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there is two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eleven cents owed, forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents in credit. We would like permission to move the credits to over, short, and write off the amounts owed before July first. This will clean up timeshare balances, except for the timeshares that are leaned and have larger balances.
So, we don't wanna lean these just cuz the balances are small?
We don't lean anything.
We're probably never gonna see it.
Okay.
We're never gonna see it, and a lot of them have sold.
They've sold. I've talked to Kelly Myers, who does the timeshares, and if this was gonna be done, it would have had to have been done before now. They're all under twenty-five dollars, that's why they were never leaned. And the only balances we should have on the timeshares are the ones that are leaned, and hopefully we sell those and get rid of them, and then we don't have to deal with this anymore. But to just clean these up. They've changed hands several times, Kelly said there's no way we're.
Right, and I, what I understand, twenty-sixty-three dollars probably isn't a lot, but, I mean, when people pay their taxes or whoever pays, do we try, at least when you're like, hey, this isn't enough, like, we.
We have been sending.
We have been, but previously, I don't think it was done.
We've got a letter that we send out, if you pay your taxes late and it's interest.
Right.
Of, just say three dollars or we do anything on over fifty cents.
Yeah.
That you still have a small balance, and we send them with a sheet of what they paid them on.
And we collected twenty-five percent.
We've collected a lot of money by doing that, because as we know, the tax bills don't show previous balances, so they're always behind. If they pay late, they're always behind, so we have, Cory and I have worked very hard in.
And we created a letter stating that.
To try to clean these up, but Kelly suggests, when I reached out to her, to say, what can we do to get, get these cleared up? She suggested for the amount to write off, because they have sold several times, and we're going into twenty-three tax year. It would have had to have been done previously.
Yeah. When did you guys start the whole timeshare business, two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, we, I think we've let some of these go before, because then we could, hopefully they could get them resold, and we'd get the money out of it.
Right.
And this doesn't include ones that are leaned, so hopefully, we have some funds that have been refunded that the people haven't cashed. We might be able to, to use that eventually. It may take some time.
This will clear our books, and then they can resell or whatever they do, and hopefully.
I just wanna make sure we're trying to get all the tax money from all those little timeshares, I would guess.
Trust me.
We are.
Trust me, I have had a list of all the balances owed and have highlighters, but, I mean.
Well, sometimes it's, yeah, there's an accident possible, so, yeah.
From two years ago now, it's just, it was let go, and.
I can see where somebody calls up, what do I owe for taxes, you tell them what it is, and then they don't send the check for a month.
Right.
And you got the interest building up.
Right, then there's interest, yeah.
Yeah.
And we try to date our letters and say we'll honor this amount through this time to give, so we don't just create more of an issue.
Right, yeah, more and more and more.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion that we write off the amount of two hundred and sixty-three dollars and eleven cents minus forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents in credit for the twenty twenty-one Jordan Summit timeshares.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded that we write off, let's see, twenty, yeah, two sixty-three eleven owed and a forty-one sixty-five in credit for the twenty twenty-one timeshares, all those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Can you guys just sign this, this is.
All in favor?
With the, once we do the work, we want this, and with that, it was approved.
Okay, bank recon from August twenty twenty-one through April twenty twenty-two need signatures.
We have a correction in that. It was, it's supposed to be September, August was done, we did discover August was assigned already.
So, it's through September?
Yeah.
So, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I thought we agreed to eventually start doing our own bank recon, is that correct?
That was supposed to take place as soon as we got the third person on, I believe, that discussion has been.
Are we, like, working towards that, or are we?
I would say we need to be, we should be going back towards that. Um, I don't see why we should be having to pay somebody when we can probably do it right here and now.
Right. I hate outsourcing days that we don't need.
Vantage to outsourcing is, is a different set of eyes on things, and I don't know if you guys remember like last week, but I had to sign that warrant with all the ones that were missed, um, the credit cards and stuff like that.
And, and I do understand that, but.
Yeah, and the other.
Paying, paying people to do something that we could do it.
But we should have raised more than a hundred dollars a month for this.
Well, but you, no, but I understand what the board's saying, I didn't realize that once, that that was the deal, that once we got a third person on staff, because we can have different titles, I mean, you're gonna have a TA, that person, like me right now, I'm also a tax collector, but we have a treasurer, we have this, so. Somebody can be doing something in somebody else's eyes, I get what they're saying a lot.
Right, yeah.
I know, I see both, I do see both ways.
It saves tax, but, but we did talk about this, that once we have a third person, like, trained.
Yes, we have, yeah, I know in the past before they did it in-house.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And all three of them looked at them. You had the, you know, the administrator, the deputy, the two deputies, they all went through them, one of them actually, I think, went through them and got them all caught up, and then the other two checked them.
When I, when I sat here, that was one of her things she wanted me to do, and, um.
Well, it was, but that's water on.
It's water under the bridge, but, I mean, we definitely have to have a policy and procedure in place, because there was so much wrong that, that's why we spent so much money just to.
Right, but that's, that's what we talked about, is, it was an issue, we outsourced it, because that's what we did, it was on two people here.
Right.
And the agreement was, we were going to.
Absolutely, I remember that, yes.
Get back to doing it the proper way, when we had all of the people.
Yeah.
I'm gonna suggest that we keep doing it the way we're doing it until a new administrator comes in, and then she sets up how she wants it done.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that too.
And.
They did it several different ways, like every month that I was researching when I first started, was done differently.
Well, I was gonna say, for a hundred dollars a month, I don't know what we'll pay it, what, how much time you guys get into doing it, but it might balance itself out.
We would definitely have to have, if we're gonna do, to do it the way Catherine's doing it, we would definitely have to have her come out here and just set us up so that we have all the spreadsheets and stuff like that, because there was, there was no spreadsheet.
Well, I don't wanna set up a new policy until we have the new administrator in here and let them do it the way that they've known we've done it all. It's not saying that we don't have a better idea, but let's listen to what they have to say and.
You want to give those to them, sign them?
I did um, I did kind of review them all and I think they're all up to par and I think I've made all the corrections. So May, once I get all the paperwork from the banks, should be at the next select board meeting.
But the lady from RHA did them all, right?
Yep, yep, and then I also.
We make the corrections here.
Right.
And then I also need this signed so that I can send it to Trio because we can access certain things. Because Amy didn't leave us her password. That's signature part of Fran's in Trio.
So Joelle signed all 300 and some odd 30 day notices because we couldn't. Did you send it to her?
Yeah.
Oh, my hand. You do not get hazard paper that.
I told her I had to sign them all last year and there was more because there were the timeshares in there. But yeah, so I just have that also that needs to be signed.
Did we get the key back from Amy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I got her.
Doesn't matter. We don't have a doorknob.
I know that, but I just happened to think of that when we were talking after we had done talking about keys.
And we do need a motion to approve and sign off on all of these. We do have the outstanding checks, Tink, which was one of the things you questioned before on those. It's that that has gotten a lot smaller.
Okay.
So like we only have like basically we have two that we have to, we're working on and then the rest of them are all previous month.
Okay.
I guess I don't want to make a motion to to approve something till everybody's had a chance to look at it.
Just could take a while.
Is this something we can table until the next meeting and give everybody time to look at it or is this something we have to do?
I don't think it's something you have to do tonight if you guys.
Just come in when you hear some time in the room?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I didn't make copies for everyone just because it's that time of year or.
Well, it probably can have problems with all those things.
No, we don't want to run it around.
Right, yeah. But I mean, there's obviously a whole bunch of months right there that.
Yeah, if you guys can make the time to come in and sit down for 45 minutes or so and take a look at these.
And then we can prove.
I'm sure they're fine, but there's still still a lot of.
A lot of info.
People that have checks out.
But if you but if.
Well, well, yeah, we haven't gone back through the whole.
Yeah, if you got one of the dates on those, I'll send you checks over. It's just say it's October's recon and there's I've sent checks from September. That's a timing issue. You're always going to have that.
Right, of course, yeah.
We have done letters to a couple of people that have small standing checks and we refunded and.
After check.
Said cashier check, you know.
I never have that problem.
I know.
And that would be more closely watched too. As I get the refund every month, I will check that and say, wait a minute, we need to send letters out to Manny and Tink because I don't know what they do with those checks.
Alright, so this, so we'll just table them and everybody can come in at their leisure and go over them. And if you see that they're alright.
Supposed to be. So for the next meeting, we can sign them.
Supposed to be raining tomorrow. I might be able to come in in the morning.
Okay, this next thing was the town area requesting all passwords for signatures and Trio be reset. So who right now, who has passwords to get in there? Nobody?
Nobody to that section of it, nobody. And we tried every possible.
Yeah, they they did not take any sympathy on us at all yesterday that we had to sign 300 and some odd forms by.
They said we need that signed by the board before they will issue us her password and then we can go in and change it.
I guess I'll make a motion that we sign that so they can get the password for Trio.
I'll second that.
Without any kind of limited what you can do.
Even like when Loretta comes home, we can't do anything.
Right, we can't give we can't get Loretta signed into Trio.
Right.
Because I tried to do something today as administrator and I and I can't get in.
The move is that we sign this request from the town area to change all passwords for signature Trio be reset. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. So this is the Pacella proposal for transfer station. Do we want to give everybody a chance to look that over and then bring that back up?
When I went to the meeting, when I left the meeting, I was still confused.
Well, I haven't.
This Tink asked for this to be on the agenda. I don't know anything about.
I they passed this out at the meeting that I went to. And I don't, at this this point in time, I don't know if anybody's, they haven't decided.
What they're going to do.
What they're going to do is what I've read, but this is the information I got from the meeting. And I made sure everybody has a copy of it so that we're we're here. And that's what they're talking, but I don't know that that's exactly what they came up with. Probably when Rita comes, she can tell us a little more about it because she's involved in it. The last page is.
Obviously a punch card?
Yeah. Seem to be what the the rates and the weights and all that stuff, what the materials are. These are the changes that they're proposing as far as I know.
Well, I guess we'll take a look at it and if we have more discussion, we'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Yep.
Alright, review and discuss our HR Smith audit report for year end in June 2021.
So this is the, these are our auditors, right, yeah. And they're the ones doing the bank, the extension thing is done?
One of their employees, yeah.
So this is just a contract you've done?
This isn't a contract. This is just their audit, their recommendations for us for any in-house, you know.
Things that they.
Edits that we need to make to our accounting.
Things that we could improve on in our accounting system. And I do have a 24-page. Thing on my computer.
So it's just, it is something we can take a look at?
It is.
And then we can, it's something that we have to sign on?
You have questions about the accounting. We can email it to you.
Yeah, and I can always print out a few like a full, a full thing, but I thought where's the end of the year?
Well, I don't I don't want to just like sit in here and you can't really.
Kind of focus on it when you're.
Basically what they told me is it's just basically their findings as our audit firm. And every year they give.
They have to report, yes, yeah.
They have to report.
Right.
Yes.
Because I had to sign a paper and I'm like, I had nothing to do with signing it. I didn't know why I was signing it.
Yeah. Did they edit it the way we asked, talked about?
Yes, they did.
They had it titled as her, she is the town administrator and she was signing saying, yeah, we approved this. No, no.
No, I said I didn't want to approve because I'm I'm not the administrator.
Right, so there was a place that the edits could be made.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. CAI technology GIS stack map contract and update for quarterly billing.
Is it okay if I sign that contract with them for quarterly billing? Gary, you thought you might have possibly talked about this. This was something that was back in January 19. Couldn't find it and supposedly CAI has not received your signed contract, so they reached out to me and said, hey, do you mind signing that?
I'm not sure, well.
It's in our budget.
Right, well, we was going to do it. I know about it. So, I mean, we did.
The former TA did not sign.
We talked about it in our meeting, I think?
Before yours or not yours?
We do this almost every year.
Alright, for for the GIS maps?
Well, we we approved the money at town meeting and then it never really got anywhere. I don't believe it.
Okay.
It's upgrade, supposedly be upgraded to what.
That's what this is. This is yearly. We send them our declarations, our lot splits, our new subdivisions. They update our online maps. That's what they do for us.
Well, we we raised the money, so I think it's, you know, keep it current is better than, you know, 20 years or 100 years back down the road, so.
Exactly.
So the more we can keep it up current, I would think it would be better.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware. I didn't want to sign something without you guys knowing about it.
I I I think I vaguely remember some talk about that, but I don't know whether we voted or what we did.
Well, we can vote again. I mean, we make a motion to have Joelle sign that contract or whatever it is. And to update our tax maps to get them on the.
To update, it's currently on our website.
Updated.
Updated tax maps.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
And move in a second to have Joelle sign the contract for updating our tax maps. All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Husek broadband meeting Monday, there was a request for up to $2,000 for legal services. RFE has been sent to three attorney's offices with municipal and broadband interlocal agreements experience. I will have more info on this subject at the meeting.
Is it what they're doing? Because I went to that meeting too.
Right.
Is they've, they've looked into all kinds of different things and they've decided that the the program that they want to go with is the one where they create a municipal.
Quasi-public.
Yeah, public, public.
Utility.
Utility, that's what I'm trying to get at here. And that's what they've kind of decided to go with and that's what they need the money for the legal fees for.
So this $2,000 could be taken out of that money that we approved for the broadband?
They're looking into whether or not we can use ARPA funds for that. My point was we just particularly Greenwood and Newery just had town meetings, I believe Woodstocks was March. None of this request was brought to us timely, so we could actually.
But we we do have money that was, we've appropriated for this.
Not ARPA funds.
Well, there may not be ARPA funds, but.
No, but that's what I'm asking you. Not, that's a question, not ARPA funds, right?
No, we, what we did was that money we had from federal government for COVID.
That's that's what, that's what the ARPA funds are.
We can't use that.
We can't, Mia and Purcell is looking into that. She's not sure we can use it for legal fees.
Plus legal fees to do this stupid broadband thing, so I I agree, I agree.
So I guess I would say let's wait and see if we can use them.
Okay.
Because we didn't really.
We didn't budget for this.
We didn't budget for it, so.
That's what I said.
That money I thought was used.
That's what I thought.
Could be used for for broadband, but.
All of those. It's for the infrastructure.
Right, so like.
Yeah, not not the lawyer.
For legal fees.
Right.
So I guess I would say that we wait until we hear back more information on that.
Okay. Okay.
Well, if we didn't go to that public infrastructure type of way, would we need these extra fees?
That I don't know. I've I've only barely got my feet wet with this broadband thing in the last couple of weeks being the TA, so I'm not sure.
I have a really hard time following the 8,000 emails a day that we get from this.
Yes, we're having a meeting.
Oh, you get them too?
We're not having a meeting and we're going to update it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
We're going to change it to this and that.
So I have no idea what we're talking about anymore because of the broadband.
Okay.
Then people are posting all these speeds. I don't know what that means either.
My phone works, there you go.
Yeah.
My boy wants more info. Okay, I will pass that on tomorrow.
Now we, I guess we go for your report.
Okay, huh. You want me to read it? You guys want to just jump down through? I want to give the staff, Amy and Lori, a lot of credit. The front office has been completely reorganized. I really do like the way I can go in as someone who doesn't know a lot about AP or payroll or anything like that. I can go in and find whatever these ladies have been working on. It's it's clear to me. I understand it. Not that I have to for very much longer, but I do appreciate the efforts that they have put forth in getting the main office cleaned up, organized, as well as where the TA will be. Also, the standard operating procedure book, which I think is integral. I don't care what profession you're in. Somebody needs to be able to jump in and do a job. You should be able to open up a book and and muddle your way through. This is how we're going to do it and these are the steps to get there. Whether you're building the house or or the front office, doing deputy clerk stuff. It's very important to have that. Paving's done on Sunday River Road.
Yeah, that was quick. They did it the next day after we talked about it after town meeting.
Yes, they did. They, at 8 o'clock that night, I sent a text, you're approved.
Well, I think they like to do it so they can work out some of the bugs that they might acute.
They're not using the the materials from here. They're hauling it from Poland.
Right, right. Some things that they might not even open this plan.
Yeah, so either way.
Some ways doesn't make sense because they they probably could have done it here and maybe saved a little, but maybe not because then they would have had to haul up oil and everything up here.
At one point in time, they had an issue with their materials wouldn't pass dates back.
This plan is not open down here and it may not open this summer, I've heard.
Right.
Yeah. I know.
Okay.
It's just a portable plant anyway.
And they'll get back to us with the shoulder work. They need to grade and get that up to par.
Is that coming under the pavement or is that coming from?
That's part of their contract.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm working on getting the road straight. Kind of putting it off a little bit, you know, August would be good, early September before the road gets too cold. But the the longer, you know, we put it off, the more it'll stick there through winter.
Yeah. Well, last year we couldn't do that because they didn't have pay.
They didn't have the stuff, yeah, right. And and that's still part of a problem. I mean, we still need our handicap parking space out here done. Because we didn't get our new asphalt until so late in the year.
Yeah.
The company that plows our Sunday River Fire Station, they are going to pay to seal, reseal that parking lot. 30 day notices went in the mail today and only took the post office several hours to scan them all in and call us and tell us how much that was going to be. And that was a lot, you know, that that went very smoothly, especially since I restacked them.
Yeah, I just. I mean, you knocked the pile over.
I did not, but it was like a writer's crap thing, so I had this giant pile. I was like, well, I'll just separate them.
You took like five, I figured out. I said, she signs about five and then she moves them over to a new pile.
And then about halfway through, I looked at Lori, I'm like, oh, these were in order.
It was fine.
It worked out.
I said, don't worry.
It did.
We'll get you back.
There's a complaint in front of you from a taxpayer complaining about her neighbor's tax bill and and how I dealt with her via email. The emails are also all there. If you want to talk about that, feel free. I'm not bashful about that one.
Well, I don't know how she found out that there's so much difference in the neighbors unless they swap back and forth. This is what I think, this is what you behave.
Well, it's public knowledge.
It's it's public record.
Public record.
But I mean, if she had a complaint about her tax bill, she should have, she had, they have a period of time to come in to talk with the assessors.
It's not her bill she's complaining about. It's her neighbor's, right? So I forwarded it to Rob. Rob will deal with it. I think he's here on the 22nd. I answered her the best I could while I was on vacation.
I do did notice on the letter though, it it said something about they had a septic system, which they don't, if I believe, when I looked.
I I have, I've written to her neighbor and said, listen, you don't have permits for three of your sheds and you don't have a septic system and if, you know, if you're actually living in that what was permitted as a shed, then they need to have a septic. At least a gray water. They do have a quarter body out there, so they can have a privy.
They don't live there.
No, but if if you were.
I I bet you they're there.
He he is there most of the time, but that's.
The two dogs were there when I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he he's there months on it and.
Right, but to be fair to other camp owners like up on Skyline Drive, you know, those guys are only up there for six months out of the year also. They all have gray water or septic systems. So I think fair's fair. It is state law. If you are habitating inside a place, you are supposed to have at least a gray water and a, you know, composting or privy or something for your sow ways. So that's what I wrote him a letter for today.
Oh, that would be addressing some of her concerns, I guess, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
But as, when people complain about their taxes, I mean, that's, we, we send them to the assessor, right?
Correct, and I'm not the assessor, so if they're complaining about my work performance.
Right.
But.
We can talk about it, I don't care, but that.
I mean, that's kind of like the norm, the normal response is you have to talk to the assessor, correct?
It is. Correct.
Yes.
And you have a period of time to beat your taxes, but she's gone past her.
It's not her, she's not complaining about her taxes, she's complaining about her neighbor's in comparison to hers, so.
Right. True.
It was a complaint. Code officer report, three new permits, reviewed and issued, one on the Colony, one on Upper, and one on Merrill Hill. I've still got two more permits going in on Merrill Hill. I've got driveways being reconfigured, they may have to come back before planning board because a couple of those lots right at the very top, the driveways were drawn on wonky. I think it's gonna be easier if they get an easement to cross their neighbors, so they're working through that, and I have two more going up at the peaks. We, we didn't slow down any.
Did we think we were gonna?
Nope.
On the test.
GIS mapping company has been looking forward to do an update since February. I'm working with them to get that done. It's a software update, so we're, we're working on that. And then lastly, my road commissioner hat. Think I did get the fire department's report, there's no plate number, unfortunately, on the report, so I don't know how we're gonna find this person.
With the sheriff department, they might have more information.
Yeah, okay.
They had to have an accident report on that.
Sheriff report, I will, yeah, now at least I have a date, so I can do that.
What's, what's happened, I don't know if you guys are aware of it, but guy took out the guide rail across from the Sunday River Schoolhouse. Probably fifteen feet of it.
Yeah.
And we're looking to get their insurance company to pay for it.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
And, and I've already told you, but I'll repeat it, I'm working on the striking schedule and the handicap space here. That's it.
I've got one thing I just, just wanna bring up for thought, I guess you'd put it that way. North New Church, we've been kind of tussling with that a little bit, and I wanted to suggest we have it surveyed so that you can walk up there and see where four corners of that lot is. Not looking for a boat, I'm just putting this out for thought.
It'd be nice to know exactly how much acreage we have there, because if there's a half acre, if it's a septic system, if the soils will accept it, might be too wet. But if it is a minimum of a half acre, then we can look at that.
I don't think it's, Gary and I looked at it on our.
I know, but being online and, and physically putting the four corners in is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, tax maps are not legal surveys.
So, we'd have to.
Just a suggestion here, we'd hire a surveyor to, to survey the lot.
It probably would not be a bad idea, because then we would know exactly what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
We have forty thousand dollars sitting in the account.
So, I think, you know, I don't know who does the surveying now, or.
I do. I see him every day, come in my office, so I can, I can put it out and get a request for two prices, would you like that?
I would just bring it up for thought.
It would probably be better if we had a couple.
Yeah.
That way, they won't just say we went to your buddies or her buddies, and, you know.
Right, yeah.
You may be buddies with both of them, I don't know, but if we have a couple of them, you know, it doesn't.
The numbers are gonna be.
I have no worries.
It won't hurt us.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll go forward to that, I mean. It would be nice if we could do something up there, but if we, you know, we, we're gonna have to do something, whether it's in favor of opinion of everybody or not, it's.
I mean, I definitely think we should have it surveyed, because it would be nice to know exactly what we're dealing with, but, I mean, I know we've put it out to bid a bunch of times to have somebody work on it, but I, I mean.
Jillin and I are gonna go look at that. I've got an idea at this point in time, I'm not gonna say too much about it. And, and I'll donate my time for it, to finish it as a temporary fix. But we're gonna look at it before we make a decision, and we'll bring it back to you guys. What I'm thinking of doing is, I think, depending on how big the rocks are, we can dig down beside the rocks, put one of those cement paths that you buy, and then they're gonna post up, jack the building up so that it's level again, cause it's sagging, I would guess about that much in the center.
Well, we can watch a video and find out.
Well, you can look at it anyway, but picking it up and putting the post underneath it for a temporary fix.
I mean, I think at the minimum, we should try to get it, you know, state-wise, yes.
But I wanna, we wanna look at it, and.
Well, I think that's something that Jim and Andre had talked about doing, is going over under, jacking it up, and then pushing that wall back.
Yeah, I don't know, the wall could be pushed back, but what I was thinking of was, I think there's room enough. The wall's going in enough so that you could put a post.
Yeah.
Underneath it just to support it, and on a later date, if they want to move the wall, they can do that, but I'm just looking at something that would, Jillin and I look at it as a possibility of stabilizing it for the temporary fix.
Then if somebody wanted to use it for a wedding, or.
Yeah, I don't know, we, I gotta, we gotta look a little bit, a little bit more into how far underneath we're gonna issues, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
It definitely needs to be like reassessed, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the thing is, there's gotta be some older generation type guy that, that's all, you know. They just like to go out and fix up old structures.
It's a matter of. It's a matter of whether or not they have insurance.
Right.
Andre would be a great choice, which doesn't have insurance.
But didn't we offer at one point to have like, to put a rider on our insurance for him or something like that?
No, we did not.
Cause I saw that was one of the things.
No, we did not.
Good idea.
That they talked about.
I don't, we, we talked about that.
I don't know if they would, that might not be a, it's an idea, but.
I, I don't think so, I'm speechless, yeah.
I don't know if the insurance companies would really like that idea.
As a general, general contractor, if I hired a, a, a company to come in and I, and we discovered that they didn't have insurance, we immediately put them on as a rider, and we charged the contractor subcontractor, but I don't know how that works for municipalities. Anyway.
Well, that's something that we can just, you know, could check into and stuff, but.
Yeah. Let me, let me start with getting some quote, surveyors for their services.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a motion? Or do you need to make a motion?
I don't think we need to make a motion until.
Wait, not to get the.
Just tell me, just tell me what.
Yeah, yeah.
Come back with the information, then we'll make a decision.
Okay. Okay, I can do that.
And I just have the mowing contract here that Gary maybe needs to sign.
Oh, yeah.
Because Tink can't, for him to mow the town hall, the Grange.
North New Church, Town Hall, Grange Hall, Sunday River Schoolhouse, the fire station, and the two triangles in the road on Sunday River Road.
So, that's their mowing contract?
So, I'm gonna be a jerk right now and say, if a lot of people are gonna have an issue with my mom being town administrator and me being on the select board, but we have a select board member has a mowing contract with the town, I mean.
I don't have the mowing contract with the town, my company has a mowing deck with the town. My granddaughter is the one doing all the signing on it, I'm abstaining from voting.
Right, and, and I, I have no problem with you doing the mow, the mowing, I mean, this is a small town, this stuff is gonna happen, but I just.
Well, last year, we put it up to bids, I came in way low on the bid.
Oh, I, I'm happy to have you do it, I think you do a great job, I just, you know, I'm just putting it out in there, cause I.
No, I, I didn't.
I don't think the former TA did his due diligence on this, and we've got a, we've got a mob.
Feel. No, I, like I said, I have no problem with the mowing, okay, and I'm happy to have Tink.
So, yeah. No, that, you wanna vote, yeah.
Okay.
Do the mowing, I think he does a great job, whether it's him, whether it's Ashley, whether they do it together, if they hire somebody to do it, I don't really care. I think it looks great, I have no problems with that, but I just think it's a little bit unfair that, you know, people are saying that I shouldn't do this, like my own mother is going to sway me into doing things the way she wants, because.
I know that, it's gonna happen.
Pretty clearly, I have my own opinions, so I just wanted to put that in there.
I, I think it's good that it's vetted out loud, huh?
Yeah, I, I, like I said, it's nothing against Tink, I think he does a great job, I think Ashley does a great job, I'm very happy to have somebody local doing it. I just think that the situations are similar, and I don't want to be the only one.
Well, I think that.
That sees that.
In February, they should have gone out, took the RFP and did. So.
No, we've already talked about that, that's going out in October. That's got nothing to do with Amy.
Oh, right.
Okay, but that's already been decided.
Okay, so this is from last year?
No.
No, that's, it's a continuation.
We extended like the mowing stuff because it was so close to like.
Right.
In February, needing the mowing done.
February, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so.
We've already worked this out, the, the RFP will go out in October, so other mowing companies can actually see what they're doing, not under snow.
Okay, yeah. Right.
Yeah, okay, let's get that signed, so we.
I was with.
And then we can make sure that he gets paid for all the work that they're doing.
Everybody should get paid, yeah, exactly. Speaking of that, while you guys are signing.
I'm abstaining, so I'm not gonna sign.
Yeah, that's good. We have rolled back my pay scale back to pre-agreement in November with Bethel, just so you guys know that that's next week on the payroll warrant, you'll see that.
Documented and entered.
Yeah. And we have done the stipends, Lori and I have agreed.
You need to witness that, bro.
I do, okay.
There's a witness.
There's a witness.
I'm on it. I'm not done with this signature yet.
Nope, that, okay.
Okay, so, does it look like we're gonna have a bunch of stuff for the twenty first, except for what we're talking about, we tabled to come back?
I don't have a lot of stuff so far coming in, no, no, nobody, sorry, I missed, I didn't, I missed back even.
That's okay, that was pretty easy, renewals are.
Yeah.
I feel like fairly quick.
When you guys come in, I will have this in a spot that everyone will know about, it's the presidential folder.
Yeah.
So.
So, next meeting?
Still, I, I talked to her about the time, and you said you could probably make a four thirty appointment?
I, yeah.
If we bumped it up a half an hour, that would help you out where you're going to work, maybe.
A half hour, a half hour, but if we don't really need a meeting.
Which I know.
You know, I mean, will technically have one for June twenty first?
At four thirty?
At four thirty, but then if we don't need it.
Okay.
Right, if it's just these couple things, then we can.
They can wait.
Is there gonna be, we had discussed there was comp time or some vacation time that some people might need to roll over because.
Oh, yeah. Can we talk about that right now, that way it's done, and we won't have to worry about that, if we need to roll over some vacation time?
That's the only thing that I. If we can't use it this long.
But that won't really affect it till July, right, till like.
Right, right, but we're supposed to request it in June, per policy.
But this would be the last meeting.
Well.
I've got like forty-four hours of vacation time still that I haven't been able to use up, and you've got how much?
I've got thirty-nine. Thirty-nine, I can't get my time.
Twenty-four, but I'm taking like twenty of it, so I.
Okay, so you're just gonna have minimal, yeah.
I would use a bit of it, yeah, and I might use it, but.
And I have used, I've tried to use up all my comp time, I'll have about ten hours after the end of this pay period. I used a lot of it for Gatlinburg.
We have elections, we have elections, and we have some.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we're all gonna have some comp.
I'm trying to use it like a game right now.
In a sense, you know, but I've got some time scheduled up in June.
Me too.
So, some of that's gonna change a little.
Some of that will change, and I would, if you just, you know, be aware that we, I could roll over as much as a week. Lori's gonna have probably at least twenty hours.
I, I've got thirty-nine, but the time I'm taking off in June is using comp time.
Okay, alright, so, yeah, she's gonna roll over almost whole week also.
Alright, so then we may have to. Maybe discuss something about making sure that this year is a different year, so.
You can say that again.
Right. But, I mean.
It's in our policy, we're supposed to use it up, it's just.
Right, but, I mean, this, it was, cause you guys are helping us out, not taking.
There's been a couple of out of the month. Yeah, yeah.
We try not to, we hope.
So.
Right.
Right, strange.
We still have lots to do.
The only thing is, after the new administrator comes, then you'll have to work with their, get a schedule to use it up.
Yeah. Yes, we will. Do you, you guys do want to put a timeline on this particular week that we're asking to roll over? Use it by August one, use it by end of August, is there, you want to put a limit on it?
I, I would make a motion that we use it by October first, that's just my opinion.
Well, that gives a couple of months, yeah.
That gives a couple of months, and then when I.
Yeah.
And that gives the new town administrator a little time to get re-admitted, all of us.
Appreciated.
Stated, I don't want, you know.
And then, then after October first, you, you go onto the next year's program.
Someone new to come in.
Yes, yeah, we need to start.
Use by October first, you lose it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Not the lack of time, but sometimes I.
Oh, no, that was a motion that I made.
And I'll second his motion.
And moving, seconding that we set a date for October first to use up the rolled over vacation time, of cure and vacation time.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All in favor?
Can I ask us one other question, because with the elections and stuff like that, I mean, you can't avoid getting comp time. We work, you know, seven AM to whatever time we get out of here. Do you want that paid out at the end of the fiscal year in the, you know? Or, that's what they did the year of the pandemic, is they paid out. I mean, I'm, I think I'm gonna use it all, I'm gonna try like hell, you know, we all are.
Yeah, it would probably.
But it's, you know, it's just a funky time right now until we get the TA in her office, yeah.
Well, I guess whatever we've done in the past.
Precedent, but.
That's fine, and I don't mind, if you guys want to give us an extra thirty days to use up last fiscal year's comp time, we can do that too, or we can pay it out.
Or you can pay it out at this year's rate.
Yeah.
Cause that, that's it, that'll be the quality.
Which way would you guys rather have it?
I'll take money, money's, money's king.
If I have, like I said, I think we're talking minimal with comp time.
I'm thinking maybe, I'm hoping to have like eight hours tops.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to have under that, because I'm planning on using what I have, and then what I'm gonna earn on election data, cause I'm gonna add that in, in a sense of my head. I'm taking two days off during, and hopefully that'll be used at all.